...twenty nineteen, we will call for our call for Jesus' order. We will have our invitation and pleasure of allegiance by Councilman Jerry.
Good morning. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for honor and privilege to gather together to discuss our city's business. And we thank thee to this great nation in which we reside. We ask prayer for all those in special need and indeed where we all are. We ask that God that's over us as we do make judgment on things and try to govern our citizens in a fair and open manner in meeting such as this. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move down to agenda item three, suppose comments for this section. Do you have any one to say?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item four, consideration of a motion to approve consent agenda. We are approving the minutes for Article Six Council meeting as well as the Article Six executive session. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item five, which is consideration of a motion to approve with application for Section Six dash seventeen D, assistance to open container provision. Now this is in regards to the Blue Room, manager Galileo Lyles, eighteen thirty channel, channel road. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, planning and zoning, is there issue in regards to this matter?
No.
Fire, is she here? She's not here?
No, we're here.
Okay, there we go. Chief?
No issue, sir.
Okay, is it City Attorney?
No, she's there.
All right, is there anyone to speak for this request? Is there anyone to speak against the request? All right, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Salute.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion by council? Seeing that there is no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's show that the agenda item five has passed. We'll move down to agenda item six, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve. Application be nineteen dash seven oh seven dash oh one, Joshua Woodfield requests interference from Article fifteen, section fifteen oh nine C. Table six of State Borough zoning ordinance regarding the maximum building height, sign height requirement of sign district four in order to allow the placement of a building sign at twenty feet located at thirteen North Main Street. All right, is there a motion to open the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, oh, if you really like us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. Our first request this evening from Planning Development Department, it's a variance request, a sign variance request located at thirteen North Main Street. The applicant is Joshua Whitfield, Whitfield signs, the owner is Warren Holland. The parcel sits on about zero point one five acres. It's in Council District number two, that's Councilman Jones District. The proposal, the applicant's request of variance to Article fifteen, section fifteen oh nine C, table six of the State Borough zoning ordinance. Specifically, this application is requesting a variance for the maximum height requirements for the placement of a building sign in the sign district number four and the central business zoning district. The applicant has requested the placement of a building sign at a height of twenty feet. The applicant had previously submitted a building, or a sign permit application for this sign, which was denied. It was in connection with the general renovation of the building. Sign height requirements in this district for building signs are limited to twelve feet in height, thus the request of variance. And you can turn your attention to the monitors. I have some property photos for you for this request this evening. Location of the property questions is directly on North Main Street, right across from the courthouse. Some surrounding property photos. The subject property is the one that's in picture number one. And the sign will be placed in the middle of the, those three windows that you see there, on that, on that middle kind of section, right above the arch. Some surrounding property photos looking up and down North Main Street. And here's the applicant's proposed signage, that is an elevation of how the sign will look. And then he's also provided an exhibit that shows the placement of the sign on the building. As you can tell from the previous pictures, the sign, or the building has now been painted a different color since this exhibit was created. Staff has reviewed this proposal and has recommended approval of application be nineteen oh seven oh one with the following conditions. Approval of this variance does not authorize the construction of the proposed signage. Applicant will be required to submit a sign permit application for staff would be an approval prior to construction commencement. Also, at the regularly scheduled meeting held on August sixth, two thousand nineteen at five P M, the Planning Commission voted six oh to recommend the approval of this variance with those staff conditions. And I believe the applicant is here to answer any further questions that you may all have to see.
Okay, thank you, Owen. Is there anyone here to speak for? Okay, is there anyone here to speak against? Seeing that there is none, is there a motion to close the hearing? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, council discussion. Seeing that there's no discussion by council, is there a motion to approve with staff conditions? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll move down to agenda item seven, which is a public hearing, consideration of a motion to approve application C U V nineteen dash oh seven dash oh three. Alicia Barnes Burnside requests a conditional use variance for Article five of the State Borough zoning ordinance. Four point seven six acres of property located at five oh eight East Main Street to utilize the property as an addiction recovery community residence in the Article fifteen zoning district. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, oh.
Yes, sir, thank you. Our next item on the agenda this evening, just a point of clarification. There was an R Z nineteen oh seven oh two. It did not complete all of the application requirements, so you guys will hear it at a later meeting date. So that's the reason in the jump from oh one to oh three. C U V nineteen oh seven oh three, this is a conditional use variance request located at five oh eight East Main Street. The request is for a conditional use variance, Article five, the State Borough zoning ordinance for zero point seven six acres of property located at five oh eight East Main Street. To utilize the property as an addiction recovery community residence. The applicant is Alicia Burnside. The owner, the property owner is also Alicia Burnside. It sits on zero point seven six acres. And this property falls in Council District one, that's Councilman Bill Boynton's district. The proposal, the applicant is requesting conditional use variance, utilize five oh eight East Main Street as a long-term residential addiction recovery community residence of ten adults. The subject site is currently zoned R fifteen, single-family residential. And the State Borough zoning ordinance does not address or define group homes, personal care homes for recovery residences, or designate an appropriate zoning district for such uses. In addition, Article two, the State Borough zoning ordinance states that a family in the R fifteen zoning district may not consist of more than three unrelated persons. And if you'll turn your attentions to the monitors, I've got some property photos for this request as well. This is the property location here, located right off five oh eight East Main Street. You can kind of see the long driveway that connects back into this parcel. I think it's important for council to note that the property owner to the north and the property owners that own the two parcels to the south are the same property owner. Some sites surrounding property photos, picture number one and two are photos of the subject property, five oh eight East Main Street. It's a fairly large house, I believe it's a five-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And it sits on three-quarters of an acre that also has some frontage on a pond in the kind of the wilde- wilder circle neighborhood community there. Some more pictures of the surrounding properties, looking up and down East Main Street. And some pictures of the properties to the rear of the subject site, there's a duplex community located there and an additional view of East Main Street property. So staff has reviewed this application. And also the Planning Commission has the regularly scheduled meeting held on August sixth, two thousand nineteen at five P M. And the Planning Commission voted seven oh to recommend the approval of C U V nineteen oh seven oh three with the following staff conditions. The applicant will be required to coordinate with City of State Borough Fire Department to ensure life safety standards meet current code requirements. B, the applicant must not exceed reasonable standard of parking and avoid excessive parking locations. C, the applicant may not install signage at this location. And I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions that you may all have.
All right, is there anyone here to speak for? Okay, is there anyone here to speak against? All right, seeing that there is, if there's none, is there a motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any council discussion in regards to this matter?
Yeah, Mayor, if you don't mind. And maybe this is not exactly the appropriate time to bring it up, but I'm going to go ahead and do it now because, as Owen stated, we don't have an ordinance that governs these type of facilities that are by and large being put in residential areas, traditional, single-family home neighborhoods for the most part. These are not going in duplex neighborhoods, they're not going in multifamily, they're going in single families. And I asked Owen and Kane, maybe you have a list, I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the plus, because do you know about how many houses, how many of these facilities we now currently have within the city?
I can't answer that.
I have a ballpark here.
I don't know.
Okay, exactly. Owen, you said?
Yeah, I mean, my ballpark, and again, it was an estimate, now giving some due diligence, was between thirty and forty.
I mean, that, this isn't, this is going beyond the scope of variance. This is now an industry in our community that is taking over our single-family neighborhood. In that area, and again, I'm not opposed to these particular facilities on the surface, but in, in my district in particular, that area around the high school has a bunch of these things. And we already know that, you know, there was an incident with the resident kidnapping, kidnapping three teenagers and three young women. And, and not to suggest that all the folks in these facilities are bad apples, as a matter of fact, it's probably quite the opposite. But I, I think when we have thirty or forty of these type of facilities, it's time to put some kind of a regulation together. Because if you look at our comprehensive plan, which we'll talk about here in a little bit, we're under nineteen, we're under twenty percent of owner-occupied housing in the city. Which means, what's what means, over eighty percent of the citizens that live in our city are transient, they're renting. Some of them are long-term renters, but when you have that low of home occupancy rate, you have a situation where you, you just don't have consistency in these neighborhoods. And you're seeing the deterioration of our traditional residential family neighborhoods. So I, I would ask whether we discuss it now or if I can bring it back up another business. But I would like to, for the council, to support my request to have Kane put together a resolution, put a moratorium on these businesses for at least six months to allow for our city manager, Charles Penn, as well as city staff to do an economic analysis and an impact analysis on our neighborhood. Because, again, I don't, I don't know how many in your alls district, but I've got a bunch of them. And we don't put five, six, seven college students in a house. Why are we putting six, seven, ten unconnected people, unconnected adults into these houses and these neighborhoods? And, you know, Ms. Burns's property, you know, that's a, that's an anchor property there with, with nice homes on, on that lake. And when we start converting our, you know, the, the best of what we have into these types of facilities, I, I just am concerned what it's going to do for our traditionally residential neighborhood. And I'd like to.
Is there any further discussion by council?
All right, I do agree with you, Councilman Allen, but I think we do need to evaluate and have a better understanding of its long-term meaning, I think.
All right, so, so what we're going to have to do is kind of pull that out, you know, address agenda item seven. In regards to agenda, agenda item seven, is there a recommendation or a motion from council on agenda item seven?
I've had a comment, Mr. Mayor, we do not do the comments, you know.
But this is, this is council discussion.
Council discussion.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I share Mr. Boyd's concern. It was one year ago that asked me. I'd like to ask Owen, Owen, how many of these houses do we have in close proximity to this particular proposed location? Are you aware?
I would not be aware. I mean, I know of one that just sits on the other side of this pond in the picture that you had, that's run by Willingway. And it's been there for some time. And, you know, to my knowledge and Planning Development Department's knowledge, no complaints have ever been heard from that one that's already in place and has been in operation for some time. But as far as the proximity on a larger scale, you know, going out a hundred feet, I have to give my due diligence, get back to you on it.
My only concern is changing the character of that particular location. We have small neighborhoods, and that is a small neighborhood right there. So you're telling me there's a similar property across the lake?
Yes, sir. My knowledge is, sir.
Thank you.
And that's, that's just there. There's actually more over by the, the high school, closer to the north side drive, there's a whole, there's a whole string of them now. And again, so that neighborhood is getting squeezed from, from both sides.
For the record, that is adjacent to the A eight facility on the north side, where I moved there, it's close to the.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, so in regards to agenda item seven, is there a motion to approve?
Does it seem like for me to speak about any of them?
Um, I don't mind offering the courtesy if it's okay, we'll come.
I'll just leave.
I will say I have the same concerns as, as Phil does, which is, um.
Go, go to the station, man.
Okay. So I totally get that. Someone approached me and asked me if my home was vacant. I had mentioned it to him, but just, you know, just in passing, I don't know that it will be a good opportunity or not. And he came and asked me, and he came up here to the city to find out about how many people he could have. And they suggested, you know, twenty-one people would be fine. And so I was not comfortable about, this is my grandmother's home, this is my, my dad developed this property, my brother lives next door, and I respect the neighbors, I have the same, I totally agree with you, and I understand that concern. So we never could get a piece about approving his request to us, but we went ahead and came up here to, to fill out the paperwork, just in case something happened that we could work it out. So what we worked out, and I worked mine, and what we had a piece about was cutting that number down to two people per bedroom, which I think would be feasible for any family, you know, two people in a bedroom, which is a big house. So we cut it down to two people per bedroom, because, and, and I have nobody lined up to run the house. I just went ahead and go up, since we're already in the process of this, to go ahead and do it. This is something that I've been interested in for probably ten years now, because I've had some issues with my life that I, that it wasn't necessarily for alcohol recovery, but I had thought to myself that I may use this home for some kind of recovery anyway, because I needed to recover, and I did recover, and I recovered through nutrition and the things that are very, very healthy for you. So if I were, if I were to run something like this, it would be, it would be something for women based on nutrition and totally different than anything else. But I just may not want to say that. It would have, it was nothing, it's not like the other places, because I'm not have, I'm not piling people on top of people. However, I do understand your concern. We have the same concern. Knowing that my brother is next door, we own the property on the other side, we own, we own the property on every side except for the lake, which we own part of the lake. So, and so our, we, we feel good about it because, because we know who's going to be in charge of it. So I can understand how that would be concerned, because y'all do not know, you know, you do not know that we, that we will take good care of it. But if there's something that we could do to have any kind of agreement, that you might have some kind of stipulations or whatever, we'll be glad to work with you on that. I mean, the main thing is we've cut it down to less than half of the people that they recommended, and we'll definitely be doing background checks if we even go forward with this. You know, we just lined it up to continue on with this, because we were already set, the motion was already set in progress. Thank you very much.
Before you step back, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Ms. Cuvie, you need to get her information.
Okay, and by the way, the.
She just needs to name it.
Okay, the place across the pond is so quiet. I mean, you, you would never know anybody's even there. And I live on Donaldson now. The place that's next to me has ten guys living in it at the time. It is the quietest, neatest house on the street. I mean, it's better maintained than the wonderful, wonderful professors who live across the street. You know, if you look at their porch, and I mean, it's, it's, it's the most well-maintained house on the block. So, my name is Alicia Burnside. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Owen, just a point of clarification. She is the one asking for the variance.
Yes, sir.
Can she lease this to somebody else to run, or does that person need to come in and make a practice? You see what I'm saying? Because I was under the impression that the variance was for only the variance holder, only for that purpose.
Right.
So if someone else were to come in, that, you know, whoever that was, wouldn't be vetted through the city. You see what I'm getting at?
Correct. They're, they're not the applicant here, but no variance is deemed to be transferable.
Okay.
Perfect, so you know I would be the one, if I did do it, I would be the one.
You gotta be the one to run it. You can't, you can't lease it to somebody else to run it, so.
She can hire.
I'm a little more comfortable with that, since it's your digs.
Yes, yes, good. Hopefully that will make more.
I'm more comfortable that your brother lives there.
And my brother lives next door, and we own the apartments behind there, and my daddy developed the neighborhood, and we don't want to do anything bad to him.
Sure, I couldn't imagine.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Well, thanks for addressing that.
Sure.
Thank you, B. Doc.
In, hold on, let's move on.
Is there any further discussion by council?
In light of the, what Owen said about the variance being non-transferable, I will, I will make a motion to, to approve.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right. And so we'll move down to the question of six months before scoring. Further transparency, our orders that we passed, we need to cast a vote in order to direct staff to begin to look into the variance. Is there a motion to?
Yeah, I got one. The making motion to direct Kane to prepare a resolution and put a moratorium on going group homes, I think three ponds or recovery residences, those, those types. And again, with the idea that you would bring that up at the next council meeting, we have further discussion. We would be voting on actually putting a moratorium down, just asking Kane to put together a resolution for more.
For our review, correct?
Yes, for our review at the next meeting.
Okay, all right, and so is there a second? You already made your motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, we move into agenda item eight, which is consideration of a motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty eight, twenty twenty-eight. A resolution for the adoption of State Borough twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-nine comprehensive plan. Justice.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Specifically, I'm just going to be giving you a small little summary of some of the work that we've done in regards to this comprehensive plan. This has been a very long process. It's been very trying, but I'm glad to finally be able to get this passed if we would do so. There we go, all right.
I can play this.
No, I, I got it, thank you. So the purpose of this summary, I'm just giving a snapshot of the rather large document that you all have on your, on your tables in front of you. Just talking a little bit about some of the things that were required in this plan and some of the things that we'll be moving forward on. The Department of Community Affairs specifically wanted us to address items such as community goals, needs and opportunities, the work program, economic development, land use, housing, and our capital improvements plan. So in regards to those, we have reevaluated the actual character area maps that we have, and taken into consideration the recent annexations that we've had. Primarily keeping it the same based on the work that was done in the twenty fourteen update. There were a lot of changes. We did separate a little bit of stuff, and this particularly, like I said, is a snapshot, so there's actually more character areas and more land uses that we have designated in the full plan. Economic development, we put together a few goals that align with what the city has been doing. Specifically, if you take a look at, you know, focusing the retail efforts and recruitment into those areas, your three oh one, your eighty, your sixty-seven, we've had a lot of development in those areas. And, and those are good areas to develop, but we also have to focus on developing the downtown. And that goes along with our historic and natural resources section of the comprehensive plan. We actually put in the plan a few key policies that will help. We did that for each section where they were applicable. And like I said, it's just a, a, a few elements that, you know, the council should look into considering moving forward so we can develop in the best way possible. As I was talking about with our natural, natural and historic resources, water is a big thing. We do have a lot of areas in the city where, you know, we got bad stormwater, we have a lot of different issues, but we want to make sure that development that we have maintains the quality of our drinking water. We got pretty solid water here in State Borough, want to keep it. We have to ensure that development doesn't mess it up, but we also have to make sure that we're maintaining some of the historic properties that we have here in the city. So redeveloping those properties, like this building, for instance, this is a historic building, and we want to keep using those historic buildings to the best of our ability. Infrastructure and facility, kind of following up to what I mentioned in terms of the drainage. I know we've done C E D Gs, you know, to help eliminate some of the drainage problems in the city, and it's been helpful to residents from the discussions we've had, but we need to keep doing it. As we move forward, I know we're looking into the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing. Those types of programs will help in regards to the infrastructure of the city. So, you know, we have those supporting policies that will assist in maintaining our city. The capital improvements program, once again, this is a small snapshot. There, there's about eight, nine pages worth of projects that we've projected, that we've projected out to twenty twenty-four. Primarily because twenty twenty-four is when we will have to go through the update process for this. So we'll need to update not only our capital improvements projects, but as well our community work program, which is a separate section with even more projects and types of projects that we'll need to do. The community work program itself, it's a required element. D C A, they, they're, they harped on us a little bit about this because they wanted us to be broad and specific at the same time. So we've, you know, managed to get it to a point where D C A has approved it, and we still give ourselves some flexibility to, you know, do some of the work as it comes up over the next five years. Needs and opportunities, once again, this is a snapshot. We got a lot of needs and we got a lot of opportunities in the city as well. We actually have a lot of information that came from our residents about some of the needs that they have individually for certain districts within the city. And those are addressed via the surveys that we took, which I will discuss a little bit more about when I get to that slide. But we, we have a lot of things that we can do, we just, you know, have to, have to make them happen. Public outreach, I, I know this started way back in November. We've been, we've been working on this for a long time. But we've had quite a few different things in terms of getting the public involved with this process. We've had public meetings, which some of you have attended. We've had surveys that have gone out, we've met with our steering committee. So we've done quite a bit to try to get the most input from our citizens in regards to developing this plan. And we are in a position now, I feel like we're, we're definitely taking the community into, into concern when we're going through it. So it's not just something that staff came up with and decided to implement. Critical issues, as you remember from the meetings that some of you attended, residents put out their issues. So the development of Fletcher Park is a thing that people care about within the community, our green space, making a walkable, viable city. A lot of this stuff, you know, this is what people want specifically. These more survey results, these were actually just individual notes that we received from our public input meeting, and these are in our comprehensive plan as something to consider moving forward. We also have a service priority listing where we allowed everybody to place dots on areas where they felt a lot of concern. And the, although it's a bit small on the screen, you'll see that retaining and recruiting business is a major priority for this city. Um, and the, although it's a bit small on the screen, you'll see that, uh, retaining and recruiting business is a major priority for this city. Um, so yeah, we, we have quite a few of those, and all of those should be considered going forward. Uh, I took a few questions from the surveys, uh, some of the more difficult questions, which had a ton of different answer possibilities, just to kind of give everyone an idea of some of the individual things people were talking about. So specifically, what, you know, do, what's the one thing you like most about Statesboro? People love the small-town feel, and that's something I, I've loved since I've got here at George Southern. I've stayed here because I love how it feels, it reminds me of my hometown, but it's bigger and there's more to do. Um, so yeah, we have different questions that have gone on throughout the survey process, and, uh, for the most part, you'll see consistent, you know, things come up, so people are concerned about, you know, things like crime. People are concerned about things like discrimination, which I know you may have, have gone through the process of, you know, establishing committees to deal with that. So, a lot of the things that people have addressed their concerns about, the city is working on, but we just wanted to make sure that it was in our comprehensive plan as something any elected body would work on moving forward. And, uh, there's an additional question of, for some reason, people feel that violent crime, I, I know, uh, Chief Broadhead has mentioned that, you know, you can walk from one side of the city to the other side of the city and not get mugged, I've tried it, it worked. But people still feel that violent crime is an issue here in the city of Statesboro. So, moving forward, it's gonna be one of those things of allowing people to know that this is a, a safe city, although we do have our issues, this is a safe city. And one more question, what does the city do well? One of the things that people mentioned, uh, consistently was that the city dreams big. So I know the, the Blue Mouth Initiative has been a very popular thing, people are happy. They say that the city dreams big and we try to do great things. They also compliment our police and our fire service, and they were actually highly rated in regards to the services that the city provided. So, just a, a pat for Chief Broadhead and Chief Graham's moving forward. So, if there are no questions for me, um, that's about the extent of it, I'm hoping that, uh, you all would approve of this comprehensive plan. Uh, the state has already, uh, agreed that it is meeting all of their requirements for adoption. Um, so at this point, it's just a matter of, in that council vote. Are there any questions for me?
Justin, I've got a comment, I just want the citizens of this city to understand that you have done an outstanding job in this presentation to us, in this compilation of all of this data. Well done.
Thank you.
It's been long and tedious.
Yes, it has.
Running back.
Yes, sir.
I know you spend a lot of time on it, and it's not easy. Thank God, we're in town, friend.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you helping.
Alright, is, is there any further discussion by council? I see that there is none, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's show that agenda item eight has passed. We'll move down to agenda item nine, which is consideration of a motion to award contract to New Way Trucks in the line of three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents per search and force bill contract, uh, number one one two oh one four dash N W Y for the purchase of a new CNG front low refuse truck. Funding is provided by October thirteenth's last fund. Jay.
Thank you, Mayor, um, this is a frontload refuse collection truck utilized by sanitation vision, other works in engineering. Fudge amount for this item is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, this is below the fudge amount. And specifications and equipment for this truck are comparable to what we already have in the needs, it's just a pretty cheap schedule, please.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. Alright, is, is there any discussion by council?
You don't need somebody to pick, grab it first?
Only you have to see me up.
I'd like to ride in. Alright, um, is there a, uh, motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's show that agenda item number nine has passed. We'll move down to agenda item ten, which is consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the Georgia Department of Transportation local administrative project, recertification application. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a recertification, it's a three-year process by G-Dog. This process is to ensure that local government agencies are qualified, uh, so it's also a process, a document is included in the packet. So it's up for renewal, uh, it's just answered here, so.
Is there any discussion by council? Seeing that there's no discussion, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Alright, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we move down to agenda item eleven, which is consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a right-of-way mowing and maintenance agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Justin.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, this item is a condition that's placed on the Old Register Road, that is more of a parkway traffic signal permit application. Just a chance for G-Dog to be able to pass responsibility back to the local government instead of the whole city. Um, the city already provides mowing and maintenance activities within areas of G-Dog right-of-way, um, so I see no negative impacts or significance. It's just an area around that traffic.
Alright, thank you. Alright, is there any conversation by council? Seeing that there's no conversation, uh, is there a motion to approve?
Certainly.
Second. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, let's show that agenda item eleven has passed, we'll move down to agenda item twelve, which is consideration of a motion to set the dates for the required three public hearings to solicit input regarding the miller's rate of seven point three oh eight for twenty nineteen property taxes. First public hearing will be August twenty seventh, twenty nineteen at nine AM. The second public hearing will be August twenty seventh, twenty nineteen at six PM. And the third public hearing will start on the third, twenty nineteen, at nine AM. Is there a motion, uh, to open the public hearing?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, alright, and just want to, uh, and just to, just so that the, the citizens know, uh, we want to keep the current miller's rate at seven point three oh eight. Uh, three public hearings required before the adoption of the miller's rate at first meeting in September. Uh, is there anyone here to speak for this request? Is there anyone here to speak against this request? Alright, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Certainly.
Is there any discussion by the council? Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, now, now council, we can talk.
You said we, we'd have the official court meetings, correct?
No.
They don't, okay, I was just gonna say, I have the, uh, downtown development training on the twenty seventh, so I wasn't gonna be here. So if we don't have to have a court, then it's not interesting. Okay.
Alright. Any further discussion by council? Alright, um, alright, seeing that there's no further discussion, uh, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we move down to agenda item thirteen, which is other, other business in city council, is there any other business from the council?
Mayor, I just have one, one small thing, uh, probably for mostly directed public works, um, and that is, uh, I had a citizen, um, contact me. I guess we had a subcontractor maybe coming to town and was doing some work on the meters or something along those lines. And, uh, it was basically an unmarked vehicle, it was an unmarked individual, and, and, uh, I was just wondering if there's some way we can put a process together where, you know, if, if somebody's gonna actually go into individual yards as opposed to working on this. Clearly, if you have a survey team out there with the LMS on doing surveying is one thing, but when they're going into somebody's yard, maybe have a visitor pass or a temporary, something or other, just to, so if somebody goes, hey, what the heck are you doing in my backyard, you know, they go, oh, here with the city.
Yeah, I was, I'm not aware of this particular instance, um, I know we did the citywide meter replacement. Contractor that utilized did have markings that said contractor for City of Statesboro, that's another information, um, I'll look at. I will look into this one, I'm not prepared.
And I'll be honest, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it was metering or-
Right.
But if, you know, the resident came out and talked to them, oh, I'm here doing some stuff for the city, oh, I don't know.
That's right, that was.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's really a public safety issue just to make sure that we're letting them know. And I know Mr. Penny is looking at you, the public information officer, and I'm sure that when those kinds of things happen, then we can give that to the public information officer, who can then distribute that, maybe put it on the website, that kind of thing, but right now, we don't have it, so.
That's right.
Hey, 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 we don't want our subcontractor getting shot by somebody either, you know?
That's true responsibility. Yeah, we're looking at that, we're making sure that's fair.
We, we know John's got some weapons that'll do that, so. Don't be too dangerous.
Is there any further, uh, this is for council? Seeing that there's none, uh, Jason, for our city manager comments, um, is there anything, anything that we need to know for the good of our organization?
Yes, sir, I have two items, um, one is next Tuesday, August twenty seventh, about one thirty, we'll be holding a retirement reception for Mrs. Starling, our city clerk, who's retiring in a month. Public is invited to that, welcome all, um, my turn for that, so, um, celebrating her thirty years of service in the city. The other item is regarding the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Application. We did receive word today that we have advanced, uh, in the application process, we want seven finalists. We narrow it down to five after they give up the site visit next month, so we're excited about that, and we'll keep that work to do.
I, I do want to, uh, commend the staff, uh, on, uh, on the work that they've done in order to get us here. Uh, guys, it was a, it was a competitive process, um, and South Fulton, Macon, it was some really big communities that really went after this, uh, and our staff was able to best them. Uh, so I'm very excited about that, uh, you know, being from Statesboro, you know, we're competitive, we want to win everything. But I, I'm really excited about that, and I can't say enough for the product that they were able to produce so that, uh, we could be at its forefront. So thank you guys tremendously for what you've done, um, and again, uh, Statesboro, this is a process, we are finalists. Uh, hopefully after the site visit, we will be a part of the next cohort. Uh, so again, staff, thank you tremendously for what you guys have done.
I know you did a lot of work on this, we really have to look at it, see what we can bring.
Don't go. Alright, um, we'll move on down to agenda item fifteen, but we have public comments. Uh, we do have Mr. Jerry Ann Weaver, um, uh, on our list, Ms. Weaver, move, approach the podium.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Uh, my name's Jerry Ann Weaver, I live at Forty Mar Street here in Statesboro, um, been living there thirty-seven years. Um, my concern is this big house next to me that's been vacant for ten plus years, a lady passed away and somebody bought the property, but nothing has been done to the property, nobody lived in the property. Um, even the property, with it being bad, has bought my property down some. My concern is, um, if the owner is not gonna fix it, why not condemn it? Um, I also want to thank the city as well, um, because on Green Street, it's got a problem back there with, um, a resident with just one of their homes and vans and trucks and all of that, and it has been cleaned up. I mean, it really looked worthy, so thank y'all, whoever had their hands in it, uh, I want to take a thank you. Also, next to the house, um, next to me is another property where, um, one of my neighbors just passed away, Archimae Dixon. And I know, um, somebody had that property, and she used to call them, they would clean the property up, but from my understanding, I think Habitat may have it now, and SMS, it really do need to be cleaned up. Um, and it's our community, we are taxpayers as well, and if we don't say anything about it or try to push the issue, nothing to be done. Um, you know, like I said, I've been there thirty-seven years, um, and I love the area, but, you know, I would like to see the area cleaned up, if they're not gonna do anything with the house, tear it down, sell the property, do something, if somebody can do something with it. Uh, at one point, I seen bats coming out of the property, and they boarded it up, and then everything is boarded up now, but, I mean, still, it looks bad. It looks bad.
And Ms. Weaver, what I will tell you, um, is that we do, we're aware of it, and I, I've driven through the area personally.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, uh, a part of the, the G-Dog program that we were just talking about, it really focuses on the west side, Whiteville and parts of the north side of the city. Uh, and what we discovered is that in the city of Statesboro, there's about a hundred and seventy-nine dilapidated homes. So that is a tremendous problem for the city.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so the program that we're working to get in is gonna help us get some funding that's gonna allow us to address that issue.
Yes, sir.
So the council has been working diligently-
Yes, sir.
-um, to address this issue, so please do not think if your, your conversation is followed on W E S, uh, we have been proactive in this. Uh, but with that being said, and that's been brought to my attention, that in the past, um, that, that the city has done a, a white day or something where, uh, they go out to their clients and things of that nature.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, what I would like to do is discuss with, uh, council and staff, and see maybe we can do a, uh, city cleanup day.
Yes, sir.
Uh, maybe on a Saturday, where we can work with, uh, with the city and the citizens, uh, to do so. Um, but please do not think that this followed W E S, we, we are aware and we are working diligently-
Yes, sir.
-in regards to that.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much.
No problem.
Yes, sir.
For your district, I'd like to come in tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's his district, so, yeah.
I'll talk to him every time.
Yeah, I appreciate you being patient, it's been like, uh, it's been a long time.
Yes, sir.
And we've been talking about this, and the state is moving, but it's moving, uh, super slow.
Yes, sir.
I hope, as the mayor said, it's, it's a process going on. We've got an application submitted, and right now, we're in a self-position, doesn't mean it's gonna get anything,
Yes, sir.
but it's looking better than we're getting now, so thank you for being there.
Thank you.
We're gonna work, we're gonna do everything we can to get it.
Yes, yes, sir. We appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, if I may, I know we are, uh, working towards the, uh, the initiative, which will provide some funding, but, um, you know, this, this past spring, we, we did ask Kane to put together a blank ordinance, and I realize that the, uh, the housing authority, that housing initiative will, will, will probably tweak a, a, a blank ordinance, but, um, I have asked, I did ask Kane about it, and he said it's prepared, we just have to put it on the agenda. I would like to go ahead and bring that forward, put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and look at it, with the, uh, with the understanding that should we become finalists, that, you know, they may make some adjustments to it. But it would, I think it would allow our code enforcement, our staff, to start moving forward, um, and taking care of the, the most extreme examples that we have. Clearly, as you said, with a hundred and seventy-nine properties, we're not gonna be able to do them all at once, but getting started sooner than later would be, um, something I would recommend, so if you guys are amenable to that, I'd like to bring that up, but, you know, he's already, just, you know, we bring up our discussion just like an ordinary ordinance, so it's still provide two readings.
Uh, and so at this point, do you want to direct staff to begin that process, or do you want to put it on the agenda for discussion?
Well, he's, he said he's already got one, he's already got a draft, so we just need to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I do, I do have, I do have a blank tax ordinance that is, that is ready to be presented, um, whenever you all would, um, like to address it.
Okay, uh, so at this point, right now, what we need is a motion, um, to, to instruct the staff to do so?
Put it on the agenda, so.
Okay, is there a second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
May I just ask you, so this won't deter our progress with, with the other?
Um, no, it won't, um-
It's not all far if not.
Yeah, um, it, it, it won't deter the process at all.
Just a question.
Um, it's, it's just that, you know, afterwards, we may have to go in and tweak it, um, and I, I have had discussion with them, and we, we, we're in line to get, um, a, a, a very, um, a, a staff member on their team that's very, very good at what they do. Um, so if we do anything wrong, that person can come back and let us know, uh, if, if we are here.
Mayor, I can follow up on that, um, I have just a reference here, um, with, we're currently in the process of searching for a new melodrake to fill that internal cover that shakes out, um, and we have two vacant code enforcement positions right now, so even if this is passed-
It's still on track.
It's still gonna be a process for us to be able to get something off the ground.
Not to mention, we'll still have to identify, you know, we'll have to figure out how to prioritize, because we're not, you can't do a hundred and eighty, I don't care. Even, even the city of Atlanta can't do a hundred and eighty properties all at once, you know what I mean? You gotta, you gotta pick out the worst ones, and so, it's really just to get the, the ball rolling, uh, so that way, you know, in two, three months, when we do have those people in place, you know, the ordinance will be in place for them to run with it, and those will be aware of it.
And, and one thing I do want to be, want to be clear on, the one hundred and seventy-nine properties, that's just, those are properties that's just located on the west side, Whiteville, um, and Lord Street areas, that's not even the entire city. So that, so, so we were very specific in the areas that we were looking to address, uh, and Ms. Weaver, I don't know whether or not you heard what, what staff were saying, uh, but we currently have a, a plan, and we are now a code enforcement officer, two code, code enforcement officers. So, so even, you know- So, so even, you know, as we go through the process, uh, it's still gonna take a little time. Uh, but one thing I would like to do, uh, in the near future is to work with staff and council to, to do a cleanup day. That way we can begin to get the ball rolling to address it, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm a patient person. Um, I've been patient a long time, so I have a whole lot of love I love.
Okay, good.
Just, just, you know, just on a press.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, that lady been deceased, um, probably about 15 years. And, I mean, nothing has been done and so, I mean, I've been patient, but, you know.
Well, let's kind of do so. Um, Miss Weaver, I'm not as patient as you. But we appreciate you.
That's right.
Absolutely. So with that being said, we do have a, a motion, uh, by council in volume, is there a second?
Sure.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's have something on the agenda.
Sure.
Okay. All right, we'll move down to, uh, our next item, which is still, uh, agenda item 15. Uh, we have Mr. Jeff Clay here with a update for the anti-bullying day. Um, and Mr. Clay, all pictures of the mayor getting jumped in a tank by the kids, we, we need for those to be, uh, to be deleted.
He's gonna be on the front page of Discover the Magazine.
Absolutely, come on.
Um, first thing, I'd like to introduce you to the owner of the Nona Peachy Restaurant. Ellen. Is donating a bench that she is donating to, as we spoke about, the United Livelihood School.
It's, uh, you call it a buddy bench, I believe, at Mill Creek, uh, a little girl donated one. And so what you do is you put it out on the playground. Kids that don't have a game to play with, they're lonely on the playground, they sit on it, other kids recognize it and go invite them. So you call it a buddy bench, just to kind of encourage kids to be friends with each other, so.
All right, now, owner of Nona Peachy, do you have a name?
J.J. King.
J.J., that's a big time name, right? J.J. King. All right, good. All right, and so we want to thank you guys for this, um, and I, and I'm, I'm really excited about the anti-bullying day. Uh, those of you that, that are, that were there, we want to thank you for being there. Those of you that were not there, it was a beautiful, beautiful event. It was great to see the community come together, uh, and rally around the young people within our community. Um, but I think what was very powerful about it as well was the breakfast. Uh, to see the number of stakeholders within the community that are passionate about the young people in our community and that's ready to do something about the young people in our community. So thank you, guys, I tip my hat to you guys. And again, uh, we're at your service, wherever you need, uh, as far as support, we're gonna try to do everything that we can, um, to, you know, to, to support the young people in our community, okay?
And, and Mr. Mayor, I just really want to thank the city council.
Yeah.
This morning, Morris Bank welcomed us and we gave a check of $2,000 to the Georgia Canine Foundation. We're going to aid Nissan in giving unique mentoring, check for 2,000. The youth commission will be receiving a check on Thursday night for $500.
Yes.
And we've got so many stakeholders.
Yes.
So you'll see little labels on retail stores with bullying crossed out. And so we're creating a mission to stop what's happening.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, yeah.
And this is what I love about the city. This is what I love about it. Um, we'll move down to agenda item 15, council, is there a need for a second session? Seeing that there's no, no need for a second session, we'll move down to agenda item 17, uh, Kane's favorite part of the agenda. Yeah, we have a motion to do it, so. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you and good night.
Thank you.